I don't mind doing it, uh, I like everything. Except for. I did, I went to Edison. It was good, I was there on the tail end. I know, yeah, and that was, that was my problem. I'm driving to Harpore. I dropped off at Sonia at seven thirty. Yeah, yeah, and I think they were maybe seven, ten. So I took a picture of them. So can we take a picture? She'll be going next year. Yep, so we had some. I know. I don't know how many, because Sonia wasn't on the, as far as I saw it was. You pink on?
What, you're dark as meat, what's going on?
I know, I'm Dominican.
Oh, that's. Joy Lotte Tanna was in DC.
You do? Was it pretty bright there?
It was sixty-four degrees. There were flowers that were real on the city.
Thank you, Dr. Mahers out of town, obviously, at a conference. Deb Mullenberg-Wilson is gonna provide us with the preschool update today. Turn it over to her.
Good afternoon. We're glad that you've asked to hear more about early childhood. So our focus today will be our youngest learners in the district. So why would a district want to have early childhood? Was my first question, as I tried to think about what questions you might have for me. So you'll note that in our strategic plan under student outcomes is where early childhood would fall in our scope of practice. But if you look at national research about early childhood, we know that brain research would document that about eighty-five percent of a child's core ba- brain structure is formed by their third birthday. So those years, there are a lot of important things happening in the development of children that lead to student outcomes in a K-12 structure. We also know that there's documented research of the lifelong positive effects of children who have had a quality early childhood experience. Things such as higher graduation rates, higher rates of job retention, less incarceration, and other social service kinds of issues. So the Sioux Falls School District has a long, rich history of early childhood. And I can joke when I say, I felt like a historian putting this together and another person of a similar age range of me said, yeah, she feels that way sometimes too. So in nineteen sixty-seven, the district received its first federal Head Start grant. For two years after the Act was passed in DC. And so the district was in the early years of Head Start in our country. In nineteen seventy-six is when we started our early childhood special ed program. And for many years, they ran very separate from each other. They didn't interface. If you had a child with a disability and a child eligible for Head Start, two different buses stopped at your house to pick you up at that point in our history. In nineteen ninety-nine, then Superintendent Jack Keegan said he would be embarking on a study of early childhood in our district. And that went on ninety-nine through two thousand and one, where we studied our delivery, what it looked like, how we taught, what we taught. And it was very comprehensive. And it was also in that time zone that most of our early childhood program was housed at South Sioux, which was a school on Forty-first Street, now the Volkswagen dealer. And it was in two thousand and one, Jeff helped me to see, that's when we tore that building down. And that's when we moved to neighborhood sites for our early childhood program. In two thousand and one, we implemented the High School Early Childhood Curriculum, which is probably one of the most researched curriculum in our district. In two thousand and three, the school board made a decision to start to commit Title I funding to support more early childhood in our district. In August of two thousand and seven, the governor's office and a group of business leaders in our city asked us to run a research project about early childhood. We were the provider and the coordinator of it. The research was done out of USD by a research team down there. And you'll hear people talk about that, starting strong. That went on for three years. Then in two thousand and twelve, the district made a decision to include migrant funding in our early childhood scheme. In twenty thirteen, then Board President Morrison was in California and learned about a program they were doing that he brought back called Ready to Start, which the Student Empire United Bay funded. And we began. In twenty thirteen, Deanne and her group started Learning Foundations, which is a tuition-based preschool option. And then in twenty fourteen, the United Way worked with us to start the Preschool Opportunity Program. So that gives you the ten thousand-foot view of a long history of early childhood in our district through a variety of means. So who do we serve in early childhood? In some states in our country, you would see what's called Universal Free Care, where public schools are just an extension. Kindergarten now is, you know, yet there's three-year-olds and four-year-olds. That is not who we are. Learning adventures with that paid tuition for four- and five-year-olds could be anyone. But all of our other program strands are driven by a targeted risk area. So our birth-to-three youngsters have identified disabilities. In our three- and four-year-old programming, we're a grantee of a federal Head Start grant. So that target is all children who live in poverty. Title I funds go to children with developmental risk factors and live in catchment areas of poverty. The migrant grant is for children with risk factors whose parents work in select agricultural professions. And then the special ed arm, of course, are children with developmental disabilities. The POP program is designed for children who are on the waiting list of Head Starts. So again, a targeted group. So our niche in the early childhood role is very targeted. So how do parents know about early childhood? The district website and K-Learn are supportive in sharing information. School offices give parents a lot of information about how to find us. Probably a source that maybe you don't know as much is the number of referrals we get from medical and doctors' offices. They have our number memorized and are sending us kids. Governmental offices also refer a lot of kids to us. So the WIC office, Social Services, Tana, send us a lot of families. And then our family service staff go to community agencies and events. So you'll see them at the banquet. You'll see them at events around young children where they'll have a booth to get information to parents. And then there's always parents just sharing information with parents is a source. So our programs really work. Starts at the screen and eval office, which is currently housed at Central Services, where clerical staff are taking calls, where people are asking about early childhood. It's where Principal Boyzen would have given them that number if somebody came to your school. It's really the start of early childhood in our district. Parents can get developmental screenings at no cost. You don't have to be worried that you have a risk factor. If you just wanna know how your child's development's going, you can call there, have a screen at no cost. The office runs all year round. They're willing to go out to sites to screen if there's a group of kids and they have parent permission. They run some night screenings to help parents who are working during the day. If you have developmental risk factors come up in that screen, there are recheck processes. If those would persist, then the evaluators are right there on site. So you can come back to have your full eval at the same location. We screen from birth through five. So we have some children who are in that birth-through-two range that may be identified as having a developmental disability. And then we move those into birth-to-three services. We work cooperatively with the state interagency group. And the ones who receive service by us are those with the most significant disabilities. Our three-to-five-year-olds.
And those services go in home?
Yes, Jenny. Yes, the way the federal statute's written is in natural environments. So we would go into homes. In some situations, we may go into a daycare. Or sometimes a parent doesn't feel comfortable with us in their home, so we might meet them at a community location. Yes, but they are not in school classrooms. So the three-to-five model, the majority of our preschoolers are in what we call blended classrooms. So when we left and they tore down South Sioux, we moved into a model where instead of having a Head Start site and a special ed site, you now went to your neighborhood school. And we have a structure on the backside that Mr. Veek designed and I implemented, Eval implemented, and now Elizabeth Jagan Gary implements, where kids go to their neighborhood school, they're blended into classrooms, the funding mechanism is all on the backside. So if you went and visited one of those rooms, you don't know who's funded how, but you're just at your neighborhood school. So those are our blended classes. Because of the nature of special ed in a community like Sioux Falls, we also have some specialized classrooms. Those are children whose disability is so severe that they wouldn't be able to benefit in a blended classroom. Maybe they can't handle the activity level, maybe they don't have the communication skills yet, but they need some pretty intense specialized instruction. So we have five of those half-day sessions in our continuum of classrooms. We have one Head Start Extended Day program. The federal government has had some notion about wanting Head Start to be all day as opposed to half-days. They, up till this point, had never had any money to support that. So you would have to cut your enrollment down in order to do that. So we have been slow to get on that curve because we know we have so many kids who already don't get in. So we did go out and run one extended day where seventeen Head Start youngsters go all day and they go longer in the school year. And we're collecting some data on growth. So that we can have a articulate conversation with the feds about the impact of doing that. The Preschool Opportunity Program is over here at LaBert Frost. It uses many of the same principles as our early childhood classrooms. It does not have the support services aligned to support some of the specialized needs of children. And then the Learning Adventure Group runs a similar schedule to everyone else in early childhood. And they're.
Can you remind me how many spots now are, are we reduced because of the all-day extended day?
We didn't reduce.
Okay.
We worked it around to make that pilot happen. But if we were to go.
So we're still serving the same amount as we were before?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So here's where all of these program options are. You'll see that the many of our locations come across the north part of the city right now. Because that's where the greatest targeted risk areas are by our funding streams currently. So that's what it looks like visually. So how many kids are impacted? So in seventeen eighteen, we did one thousand eight hundred and sixty-two developmental screens. And in eighteen nineteen, one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one evaluations. You can see infants and toddlers, we evaluated two fifty-one. And then two fifty-eight next year. And we did two hundred and seventeen three-to-five-year-olds and a hundred and eighty-one the next year. So it's a busy, hopping place to do that many of those. Our program capacities, in birth-to-three, you can't put a capacity because if those students identified, we would have a responsibility to serve. This past December one, which is the unduplicated count period in our state, we had a hundred and twenty-five. I'd say we've been between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty for the last few years. Our three-to-five capacities, Head Start is funded at four hundred and fourteen youth Title I. It is funded at two hundred and seventeen, thirty-four migrant eligible youngsters. And again, no capacity on the special ed end, but we were at three nineteen on December one. The Preschool Opportunity Program has a capacity of sixty-four and Learning Adventures is sixty-eight at the current time. As of this morning, not including Learning Adventures, there were one thousand one hundred and thirty-three early childhood youngsters in our district.
That Learning Adventures, is that sixty-eight per site or that's sixty-eight total?
Total.
And there's, did I see three sites?
John Harris, Selena Sotomayor, and Discovery. There's a morning session at John Harris and Discovery. There's a morning and an afternoon at Selena Sotomayor. So what do we do in early childhood? You know, our goal is to deliver a comprehensive child development program for those youngsters, focusing on language development, cognitive development, motor development, adaptive skills, and social and emotional skills. If you ask teachers today compared to fifteen years ago, they would probably talk more about increased needs of social and emotional needs of children. We do use a research curriculum and in our model, the curriculum is delivered by a certified teacher. So given the federal-directed parts of our program, we also have probably a nice group of support services that you might not see in a typical early childhood setting. The Head Start requirements include supports to families, nutrition services, transportation services, and health services. So the family service part, our family service staff are helping families, maybe find housing, find resources, put work, all those kinds of things. Our nutrition component that we're required to meet is we have to meet two-thirds of a child's daily nutrition needs in the time they're with us. So there's an enriched snack provided during their session. And there's also an enriched meal provided. And children are eating family-style in our classroom, learning the social etiquette of that. Transportation is a service that's provided, although we encourage and work with families to work toward giving our children a school. Because if you just give them a ride when they're four and then they have to go kindergarten, they have to get them to kindergarten. So we work hard with families to try to become more independent with that. And the health services on the Head Start grant requires that we assist families to make sure children get immunized, that we get their teeth checked, that we, all of us, go to services. If a child has an IP, of course, then you have services like physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech-language therapy, and school nurse services if they would be eligible for that. So. How do we know if students are making progress? This is what we need to be about. So this part of us isn't all that different than K-12. How we do it is different, but we still have systems in place to make sure kids are growing and developing. So all of our children's families are involved with home visits with our staff, where we're doing some mutual goal-setting with parents on what we want their children to be doing so that parents learn about that, know what they're looking for at home. There are three of those visits during the year. One is focused strictly on literacy, which is an area we've seen need in our children's world. So three times during the year, we have a progress monitoring system that teachers are entering notes about what children are doing in class. And then we capture those three times. And we actually track fifteen developmental areas. So I put a couple examples up here from a year ago. One area is alphabetic knowledge. And so it's a one-to-five scale. So you can see there are the three periods in the year. And we're seeing, that's our program as a whole, kids are growing at those increments. And we can look at it by student, we can look at it by classroom, and we can look at it as a program. But we try to see trends in areas we need to reconsider things in our curriculum, give more training to teachers on instructional principles, those kinds of things. So that's how we monitor and that and report to parents. Now you can't run a whole bunch of federal programs and not know you're gonna have to have some quality reporting that we do, it's just the nature of the beast. So annually, we do a program self-evaluation that all staff are involved in different ways. I think Board Member Baker joined that group this year as your liaison to the Head Start Policy Council, where we really look at what we as a program are good at and things that we can be better at. We also do a needs assessment of our community that says what's going on with preschool in our community and what are the needs of our families in relation to that and how do we interface in our community to support our families? That's a really great thing about our early childhood program is the many community partnerships that we have established. So we also have in place a process in which trained evaluators go and observe teachers a certain number of times a year and give them feedback. It's a little different than what you would see in K-12 because it's actually a formal system of evaluation. But it's a good way for us to have other eyes in classrooms to help teachers problem-solve and grow. So the Federal Head Start Office has a process and desk audits. And they come on-site a minimum of every five years to be in the classrooms to see what we're doing, to ensure quality is going on. And then a few weeks ago, you learned about self-initiating, participating in the South Dakota Preschool Levels of Excellence to again, continue to challenge ourselves to get better and to raise our bar.
How does the South Dakota Preschool Levels of Excellence, what teeth do they have in it besides just oversight?
None.
Because the funding is not.
There's no funding hooked to it, it's all voluntary. And really, I think the power of it is in the self-reflection that you do going through the process. And so if you do that at a good level, you're asking yourself questions about how can you be better at this point in the framework if they have no teeth at all?
I just wanted to make sure I've got this straight.
The teeth is in the bullet above it.
Right, it's really the federal funding, but the state of South Dakota has a Levels of Excellence for preschool, but there's no funding that is attached out for those levels. but there's no funding that is attached out for those levels of excellence.
That's correct. The teeth is in the federal monitoring where they can decide if you have deficiencies, if you have to do corrective actions, if they want to, they could see some of your funding. They have all that teeth there. In our last federal review, we had no findings at all. We anticipate next year we'll do an audit and then they'll get ready and come back with them. So I think we've always approached that process as if there are things we can be better at, we want to be better at it. But we also don't want to be negligent in things we know we should be doing. So you have one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five days between a day a child's born and they get ready to go to kindergarten. And so all of those days, preschoolers are soaking up a lot of information. And so what we deliver in our early childhood classrooms is really our way to help them soak up the most important things that will really help them be prepared to be a learner when they get to kindergarten. So, questions?
Deb, thank you to your team, my students, for all this information. It's just so important for our district with school readiness and for our students to allow them to be ready emotionally and mature at any level as well as academically to start school. And it helps our staff with behavioral issues and just other issues going on. So what you guys are doing, even though South Dakota doesn't fund it, is so, so important for our schools. I'd also point out with the funding issues that, once again, you're going to hear that we talk about the census and how important that is and how we promote this with our families to make sure every person is being counted because it's eighteen hundred dollars per year, ten, ten years if that person's missed out the census that we miss that funding to prevent them or provide their services. In addition, I was made aware by Ann Smith that some of our funding's tied to state, which is an internal revenue code, tax return thing. So it's important for that because we will be using funding because people must not be doing that even though we're providing the services. So just really important things going on. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Can you tell me, how much does it cost for the families that are paying for preschool? What is the, like a learning adventures, how much is the?
That.
Our previous, actually our first year, was.
That.
Are we done? That's a simple. But pretty done for the first learning adventures, which we should have a nice. And really, we're looking to the mid-buy space because we don't have a ton of other classmates. So we balance what we need with the space we have in each of these. And so Megan, she was at Grandchild Harris, called Megan to write a big waitlist here. You got to come to pass to her chair. But we've got a classroom that falls. So we're paying attention to the immediate community. Provide transportation. So we're able to. And it's Monday through Friday, right? I mean, it's Monday through Thursday, right? Sure, because I'm thinking of, you know, when my kids were younger, when they, I want to say when they were three-year-olds, they went Tuesday, Thursday. And then when they were four-year-olds, they went Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So, and I know I paid more than a hundred and twenty-five dollars every week. So I mean, for the value of what you're getting is a great, a great option. If you don't have a connection or aren't able to get in or afford even, there's been great private preschools too. But if you can't get into us, or you know, I feel like we do provide a really good service and really good education that's very affordable. Upon starting this, that's kind of the. It's not to be proficient. To have a positive, best parent. We need them. Absolutely. But. For the convenience, we're going to be driving second. That's really.
Sure. I still have not met Ford Housing. She is still working on putting together a committee. The. Can't think of the committee. The Sports Authority, sorry, has not met, we're in off month. So I'll meet this month in the next coming weeks. But if I can, share just a little bit with my trip to DC. I'll make it real brief and then I'll send each one of you a little bit more of a detail. I'm going.
No, we have plenty of time today, so.
Day one. Eight oh five AM.
Thanks, Harley.
Yeah, get going. I was fortunate enough to get elected from, we're in the Western region. And the Western region elected me to go and be on the nominating committee for the upcoming Vice President. So this was my, it's a two-year term, this was my second term. It's an interesting process, they take your phone away. And I thought that was more of a punishment, but years ago, somebody leaked out who was elected. And the person found out in the elevator from somebody that leaked it. So we weren't allowed to have cell phones. So I did go through a little jonesing for that. It was fun to go through, we had three really good candidates. And it was fun to go through the process. And it was a good group of people. And I think at one point, there was going to be one guy, at one point, it was the other lady. And it came up to be Frank Henderson, who is in the School Board of Kansas. That will be, so actually the president-elect. So that was my first day. The second day was the Equity Symposium. And that was a great day. And then the next two days were Advocacy Institute. And then yesterday, we went to the Capitol to meet with the senators and then aid for Congressman Johnson. Everybody wore these cool little things and I got a few extra. But it was neat to look going through the halls of the Capitol, how many red stars are there? So it was, it was fun to see that. Some of the topics, high school student raps to the school board. There's a number of school boards that do that. Couple of them are mandated by the state, so I'm not going to tip on that. But I think it'd be something we could talk about. It would be interesting to have the input from students. And the stories that I heard were pretty incredible, the insight that some of these kids had. It's no news, but it was mortifying watching the Juul and vaping videos how big of an epidemic this is and how horrifying it is for kids. You'll see those pictures of kids in a hospital. There's people that make their own cartridges. And who knows what's in those? And it's really horrifying to see what damage was done to some of the kids. And for a short period, Juul would send somebody in to the schools to talk about the potential damages. But we end up actually promoting it and got more and more kids. So there's schools like in Baltimore that have detectors everywhere, outside the bathrooms, there's cameras. They're really cracking down on that. The big thing was the census. And they hammered, I went to two different breakout for that. And it's a pretty big deal. People are afraid to come in and sign up. They don't know what the ramifications are. Apparently Census can't release any of that information for seventy-two years. So any information that we're seeing from Census is, and I don't have any proof of that, that the lawyer for the class told that and said he would send us information on ways we could probably step our game up. And I've got some ideas that I had to. Mental health, that was a huge issue. They were talking having separate mental health counselors, if not for, you know, schools for the district, one or two. But again, how you pay for that. Over the lunch, we had a family, it was tear-jerking. You guys that know me, I cry over Kleenex commercials. So this one was a killer. But the mom was up with the daughter and son. The daughter had tried to commit suicide and the son found her and saved her. And so he is now a junior in high school and developed an app called Not OK App. And they'll send me some information on that. It's an app that if you're not feeling good about yourself or in a bad place, you push one button on your phone, it notifies five people that you've picked out that will call and just check up. And it was an incredible story and incredible that this kid could come up with this software. And it was amazing, the girl that attempted the suicide said she would have used that. She was just confused, she felt she just needed to not be there and if there was someone right there to talk to. But there was something there. Have I taken up my time? I've got a couple more to go. We went through the gender discussion. And the big picture is, is we have to protect the kids that identify with a different gender on their birth certificate, but we also have to be mindful of all the other students. Meaning we need to educate all students. And so it doesn't matter if they're the gender that doesn't identify or the other kids. We need to keep everybody in mind. And there were some great buildings that they showed, some things that they did. I can go into that later. One that I won't go deep in because it got pretty hairy was anti-racist. We still got a long way to go. And they gave some unbelievable examples of things that are still going on. And if I can take personal privilege, my opinion was if we move on with the school of choice and continue down that road, we're really going to go backwards and continue segregation or restart segregation. So that's my two cents on that. Grants for tuition, that four thousand dollars that's forgiven for students that go to areas in need, that's up for refunding. And so when I got to visit with Senator Thune, I just brought up that that might be raised up a little bit, or I think there's the opportunity to make it go to eight thousand. But it needs to go where you need help. You know, we have not enough funding for special ed. We have trouble gaining teachers here for special ed. It'd be nice if we could bring people in and have some relief for their education or what areas that we need. Think that's it? There you go, sorry.
Oh, that's a great point.
But it was a great conference. And again, some of the best stuff is visiting one-on-one with other school districts, one-on-one with students. So I felt it was well worthwhile and I appreciate the opportunity to go. Thank you.
We had policy yesterday. We've got six policies that are going to be up for review revise. Nothing, yeah, nothing significant. Most of it's clean-up language and just clarifying language. So you guys can read through those when they're posted. And then calendar committee met on. On the fifteenth. And good discussion, looking at some different options for next year. We've got another meeting, several questions were asked. And Dr. Gold actually followed up with an email shortly after the meeting to clarify some items for the committee. So some more discussion in the next meeting. And half committee, we met on the third. And we're starting to look at Jefferson High School. And I think we mentioned that rifle. I don't know how to think about it. We didn't start talking about that, but did start talking about Jefferson. And. Flash recording.
Kate talked about calendar and policy. And so I'll just briefly talk about insurance. We met, just a few things, just a few comments. We have an increase of about one percent enrollment over last year. We're going to start looking at premiums for next year, coming up here at our next meeting. And year-to-date, kind of our consumption of benefits and stuff, we're at ninety-one percent. And at this time last year, we were ninety-four percent. So we're actually better than we were. Still have nothing meeting that stop yet, a dollar amount. So we're still looking good with that as well. And really, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head. But you know, typically the insurer or the company pays X amount and then the employee pays, it's usually around fifty-fifty. And we're looking at more like sixty-forty, where the school district is funding about sixty percent compared to the employee paying about forty. So from a market perspective, I feel like we're very competitive what we have to offer as far as done for ourselves. That's about it for that.
Chamber, then the executive board is in first step of the meeting. So he was mutually writing, his family living here in Maine, first of the first new school. I know he's looking at homes, I told him he should buy his first for this great. Let's see, Suamper Leadership Council, the triage center was announced. That was the last big nugget that's now taken on by a first step committee partnership with the over in Sanford. So now we're discussing kind of a process in how we should review what our next big chunk will be that we started evaluating. Is that kind of going through the process of how they're going to build things forward and how we will. Is this what we want to put? So nothing as of yet, just going through the process and how we're going to do this. Budget, we have a lot of report in the.
Super. Well, thank you for the report today on our early childhood. And I'll just, our early childhood committee met. So I'll just report back a few of those findings. Year-to-date, we have an allocation of our budget at about three point three million. Um, year-to-date, um, we have an allocation of our budget at about three point three million. And, um, year-to-date, we paid, um, about nine hundred and fifty-five thousand of that entire budget. Maybe you talked about the revenue sources in the overall budget before. And then just some interesting, um, key indicators for the early childhood, um, program. And maybe you covered that as well, did, where we're at. I'll let you know because it's kind of some good news to report. Um, uh, but of those that are required to go through some health, um, screenings, we've had eighty-six percent, um, get physicals as well as, um, eighty-seven percent get dental exams of the students involved in the program. Um, our lunch, our lunch count and snacks continue, continue to be consistent. Um, we do have some, uh, more parents that are getting fed, which just shows that we have some more parent involvement in classroom. A good, um, for our key indicator. Um, we also are at capacity. We're serving, um, four hundred and fourteen, um, students. And that's what we're allocated by the, by the federal government. Speaking of which, we did apply for federal funding. Um, that application is due March first. Um, the total funding, we had about two point six million. And there again, our, our funded enrollment would be four hundred and fourteen students. Another key indicator that, that was really promising for the program is our monthly attendance, um, in December is at ninety-four percent for both AM and PM. And that is consistent with November. And October was at ninety-five and then September was at ninety-six. So it went down a little bit. Um, some of that they attribute to when it's pulled out, the students just, um, have other things going on besides school. But still overall, the, the ninety-four percent attendance is really, is really good. The other committee is our education foundation. Um, there, there's just, um, two, um, pieces that, um, are of significance to really talk about. And that's number one, the letter that we received. And what we're, uh, what we've talked about and will be doing is, uh, having a meeting, um, with Dr. Maher, Anthony Pfizer, who is the current chair of the foundation. And then myself being the liaison between the two groups, as well as Allison, the executive director. We get together and talk in a smaller, more intimate group about the scope, uh, and the vision for that strategic plan. So ultimately, we might be able to help them, um, with how best to proceed. Um, also the teacher grants. We had sixty-one applicants from thirty-one schools or sites and a hundred thousand dollars worth of grant, uh, money to, to give out. Um, voting for those, uh, grants will be in February. Any questions? For the, um, right, I, our talk last, the last one we got together, sort of what the bigger control review looks like for that. But it is a bit of a.
Just remind it to the public, to a lot of these people watching.
The PM, yeah.
February nineteenth is our next, uh, task, task first. Please tend to make sure, uh, use the Let's Talk app to, um, get in discussions out there that you want to make sure to step up. And then afterwards, we'll start the middle, the five, um, at least five, uh, meetings at the various middle schools to kind of go over the community with those options.
Anything else for, for body? Do you have a motion for it, Jenny?
A motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We should pass this, we're adjourned.
Thank you. We would have pulled you by your scarf.
Yeah. Say something mean.
Call meeting in order. Stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't have anybody sign up, did we? For persons to address the board. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of the January eighth, uh, meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, same sign. Motion carry. No new conflicts of interest presented to the board. Uh, item seven, A through D, uh, approval consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, same sign. Motion carries. Onto the reports of the president.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. It's a pleasure to kick off this, um, board meeting with our spring enrollment numbers. And we have some good news to share with you. So where we ended up with our head counts, you can see the numbers from two thousand nineteen versus this spring. So up a hundred and eighty-two students, um, good percentage there, eight point five percent. Looking at credits. You know, we've been trending, right, that we've, we're always, seems like the last couple of semesters, we've been up in head counts, but then just maybe tweaking, you know, just squeaking by with a little extra credits. But we had a good increase in credits as well. So we were happy to see that. And looking at the percentage of spring semester enrollments by student type, um, you can see where we're at there compared to last spring versus this spring. Um, just to kind of give you an idea, where we saw a nice increase was our dual credit and our partnerships with our high schools. And I'm gonna break that down on the next, next slide there. Any questions about the breakdown here as you're looking at those numbers? Okay. And so looking at our dual credit concurrents, and then of course, um, Avera Academy and our Sanford Classroom Careers. Um, again, um, you can see our total, um, dual credit number there. The Avera Academy and the Classroom Careers, seems like just maybe a year ago, we're having the discussion of, you know, missing our learners' leaders. So these have been good, um, additions and, um, those students, I think, are getting. missing our learner's leaders, so these have been good additions and those students, I think, are getting a lot out of it. And it's a good pathway for them. And then we have five students out at McCrossan Boys Ranch taking our construction. That would be our general construction certificate classes and then concurrent. So that would be those high school teachers are teaching our curriculum. So we have a couple down at CTV. Yeah, so that's kind of spring enrollment in a nutshell. Not, not much more to say about it, but you have any questions?
No, just congratulations. That's obviously outstanding news when you see what's happening to the universities in our state.
Yeah.
Their enrollments and what you guys are doing. Obviously, you're being so responsive to students and businesses in our community, so because of that, you're being rewarded by the uptick in enrollment and credits. And I, I know it's frustrating to see this huge enrollment and not as many in credits, but thank you for the service you're providing our high school students as well that we oversee within the school district, so we appreciate it.
So the dual credit is part of that, right? They're part-time, but also just with our adult learner population. We just know that, and that's nationwide with adult learners. They tend to, right, we all have busy lives, and so they're taking classes in school part-time, so I think that's just a trend we're going to continue to see. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve the spring enrollment report?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
President Mickelson, members of the board, I'm Tracy Olner, Executive Director of Student Affairs and Institutional Effectiveness. Always an honor to come and talk to you, especially when you have good news to report, and I think you're going to hear that in all three of the presentations today. Today, I am going to talk to you about the employer survey. This is the two thousand nineteen, which means the survey was conducted this summer and into this fall. We finally got all the results pulled together and wanted to do the report for you. This is a survey that we do every other year. We basically send this out to all the employers who have graduates of ours from the last two years that are either in field or in related field. So basically, when we do the graduate placement survey, I'm asking them, who's your supervisor? We try to send this directly to the supervisor as much as we can, so we get exactly what's happened with that graduate and how they're performing. Our return rate is forty percent for twenty nineteen, and that's been consistent with other years. And considering this kind of a survey, it reaches a point where I'm begging them to send me back a survey. And we do have employers who flat out will just send it back and say, we don't do these surveys. I am seeing that, although that may have been true in the past, I'm seeing some larger organizations now that are sending them back. I think partly because they need employees, and they know they do a great job, and they want us to know more about it. So I am seeing that, I'm getting more of them that way than there was before. This is part of our key performance indicators, so this is one of the reasons why we do this survey. And we do have a goal set. There are thirteen categories that are on the survey, and our goal is, we always want to have an average score of three or higher on all of the categories. But we'd also like to have at least half of those categories be a four or higher. It's a really hard target to hit. And we'll talk about it a little bit more later, but we have in the past hit it, but there's other good information that we gain besides that. Categories include things like written skills, work ethic, safety, and so forth. And then the measures that we use in the employer satisfaction directly relate to our student learning outcomes, so we can compare the two. So we can see, okay, we're thinking this is how well the students are doing in these outcomes, but we can see what employers say too, and we can see if they match. They provide us ratings in two different ways. What did they expect and what did they get? So I'm asking them, say, for a brand-new employee just coming from Southeast Tech, what would you expect them to be able to do in this particular skill? And then what did you actually get when that employee started working for you? They do this on a rating scale of one to five, five being excellent and one being unacceptable. So here's an example of one of the charts. We do a chart like this for all thirteen categories. We also do this chart for every program. So not only do we need to see this at Southeast Tech altogether, but every program gets to see their graduates and what those employees, employers are saying about their particular graduates. So if you look at twenty nineteen at the top, and you can see all the other years are there, the ones that aren't marked are the years between, so twenty seventeen is between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen there. But you'll see we have two colors. The blue is the actual, what did you actually get in terms of oral skills of this student? The red is what did they expect. You'll notice that for twenty nineteen, they got more than they expected, which is always what we're trying to achieve. Here's the results in terms of the KPI. We've always met that three plus, and we've always done well that way. Thirty-nine percent of ours were at the four-plus range. We've met the fifty percent once. But in terms of what I'm really looking at, this is only one of the things that I'm interested in. I'm actually interested in looking a little bit deeper into those expectations and those actual values. So in terms of expectations, what I found interesting is that they were lower this year than they were in previous years. I think this is because we're in a tough economy, or in terms of employment, they're not finding a lot of people, so when they're looking at them, they may be saying, hey, we didn't know what we get, but boy, they did pretty good. Their expectations are a little bit less than when you have six or eight people applying for your job, and then you're saying, okay, I think I'm going to get the best if I don't. So they expect a little bit more in that sense. So we did see that fall. On the other hand, in terms of actual performance, we saw the actual performance in these areas, oral skills, customer service, written skills, basic skills, and overall performance went up. And in some cases, when you see that point one-one for customer service, that's a big increase from the previous year. Went down in only one area, equipment familiarity. That's a common one to see go up and down, because if we're not using the same equipment that the employer is using, they may rate that differently. We didn't see changes in those other ones. They were very, very close to the same as they were in the previous year. In this particular survey, though, what I was really looking at, we always look at the gap. We take the actual minus the expected. If that's a positive number, that means our graduate outperformed the expectation. If it's negative, that means we underperformed, or our graduates underperformed. In this particular case, on this particular survey, every single gap score was positive, which we have never had happen before. And so in each case, the actual performance of the graduate was higher than what they expected to receive. You can see those in the twenty nineteen column going down. I'll show you all the categories. Those are the first set of categories. Every one of them is above zero or at zero. I consider zero to at least be positive, and mathematicians will say, no, there's no sign of it, but I'm going to call it positive. And there's the other ones, team, technical, safety knowledge, computer literacy, work ethic, and so forth. Computer literacy you'll see is a positive point four-three. That is always a huge one. I always think our graduates are very, very illiterate. The technical skills, which is obviously one we really strive for, is a point one-seven, which is huge. And you'll notice with work, work ethic, it was above the work ethic, and they always find graduates from Southeast Tech to have a high work ethic, and so that's positive to see as well. Overall performance was a point one-four above, which is a huge positive gap score. Just to show it visually, I put it into a chart. A red box means that the performance was not up to par. A yellow means it was pretty much at zero is exactly what they expected to get. A green means they were above what they expected. And we've never had as many areas reach that green as we did in twenty nineteen, plus the, the yellow areas, no red areas this year in terms of that. So something we can be very proud about in terms of our graduates and their performances. We also ask employers to rate Southeast Tech in a number of areas to find out what they think about how we do what the institute does as a whole. And so you'll see in this list of meets company needs, location, instructional quality, our equipment, our facilities, relationship, program operating and reputation. They're all great scores. The only two that fall below are four. One is meet company needs. I can tell you right now, they likely don't think we meet their needs because we're not putting enough graduates up. And so we're not meeting their needs. In fact, many have commented that we need more. The other one is equipment, and again, I think that often comes with, they like the equipment always to be up to date, and in some cases, we may not always be able to meet their desires. But also they like it to be their equipment, which is a very possible. We also asked them to do one other thing. We asked them to rate us. It's a scale of A, B, C, you know, the regular scale that you would see in any school. And then I changed it to percentages. This year, we were at a nineteen, ninety-two point nine-five percent, which is the highest grade we've received. Always in the ninety-two. I'd really like to hit that ninety-three. We just about did it this time. But still, any change in that, and especially one that goes up, is something to celebrate. So overall, the results of the employer survey two thousand nineteen reaffirms that we have strong employer satisfaction. They love our graduates. There's some natural variation that can be attributed to his fluctuations. Of course, sometimes they're a little bit higher, a little bit lower, lower, but when you see all of them above the expected performance, that really means something. And so they are definitely thinking and seeing our graduates as a positive for their company. What will we do next? Well, we'll celebrate. This is great. In fact, tomorrow I will give this report to all the employees that are working with me. We'll continue to monitor employer satisfaction. We will continue to do this over two years, and we'll determine additional areas for potential improvements and purpose. And with that, any questions?
It'd be great to incorporate that, those results into some quick visual aid to show student, potential students and students what a great value they're getting because of this and what they're bringing then once they have our graduate of the program or receiving a degree. Is there a question? I didn't see a question on there, but is there like a retention question? I was thinking for employers that, because that's what I've been hearing a lot at these sector breakfasts is the biggest issue, not from our students, but for in general, employment is retention of employees. And I, I wondered if that would be a question to be added in twenty twenty-one to these employers of our graduates.
And, and just so you know, the graduates that we're surveying is the last two years of graduates, so some have only been there for a very short time, some in the long term.
So this is a long-term.
But they could answer the question in a long-term capacity and say, how do you rate or what do you see as in terms of our graduates and retention of those employees? That'd be great. We did share this with marketing, the information. We actually have an external stakeholder relationships team. We shared it with that team. Marketing is on that team, and so I, I think they're looking at ways that they could share this information and go it out to the public in general, too.
Are there, to piggyback with the industry needs, so just a spot where you ask an open-ended question to the, to the effect of, in your industry, what problems do you need students to solve? So if they're projecting ahead a little bit in order that you can massage the curriculum to continue to meet those needs.
I'd just say, that probably happens more in advisory committees, so then, because it's more program-to-program specific. So in those means they're asking those questions of those. One of the reasons I like to do this survey rather than just use advisory committees, which is what a lot of colleges will do, is they'll just use their advisor committee to give them all the information. Our employer base is so much larger than we could ever have in our advisory committees, that they're only a small portion of the full number who could give us information via graduates. You're going to see in the other report that Paula Hox will do as well, that we're building more and more of those connections, so we can ask those questions, not just on the survey. We can ask these questions of employers at any time and get a wealth of information, not just from advisory committee members, but from the employers at large. So it is an opportunity for us to do that.
And also that to be a real strength is your ability to be nimble.
Right.
And respond to the, the industry, like around here, or employers, if you want to call it that, and then how you adapt your curriculum. So congratulate.
Yeah, in fact, many of the certificate programs that we've added is exactly because of what you're saying, talking industry and you're saying we need this.
I was just going to add, you know, as we are outgoing, looking and meeting with maybe potential new industry partners, what a great testament to say, you know, here's why we would love to have you help us with our Build Dakota Scholarship, you know, doing a partial, or here's why, you know, we'd love to help you, have you contribute to our foundation, or whatever it may be. Is because the people that we're currently working with are very satisfied with the results that they're getting, and we'd love to have, you know, new businesses be able to participate in that way as well. So yeah, great report and great data to share, so thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Do you have a motion to approve the employer survey report?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
In this, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
This next report actually is a great follow-up to the one I just gave, because obviously, we have to get those students who are graduating ready to go into the job market. And actually, we don't always have to work that hard to find them jobs, but we have cases where they do need some more support in getting that first job. So Paula Hox is here to talk about our career services and what we offer those students.
Thank you, Paul.
Good afternoon. As Tracy said, I'm Paula Hox. I am very happy to be here. I was asked by some folks at Southeast Tech to come in and talk to you about the career services and what I provide in that office. It's a huge office. Career Services is gigantic. What would you say the size of my office is, Megan? Like, ten by eight? Yeah. That's good, that's good. It does not speak to the number of services that I provide for students at Southeast Tech and what we are able to help them with. Got that to go. There we go. So we at Southeast Tech have career services incorporated into our student success offices. And so I'm also a student success advisor, so I have that direct contact and a little bit of teaching experience with those students as well. But every career center across the country has the opportunity to be a part of the National Association of Colleges and Employers, and we are NACE members. And NACE is the organization that sets the standards for our reporting when it comes to career services. And so as I talk about some of these things in our placement report, there are standards that we're meeting based on what they have set for us. And some of those mesh really well with what Tracy is collecting for data, and sometimes we're helping each other collect data. He's asking me if I've got results. I'm asking him if he's got results, and so we're, we're combining those pieces of information from employers as well as from our students and what, what we're getting together. So our placement report is based on some of those stringent rules that the NACE sets for us. I also provide a variety of, of services through the Career Services Center, and I'll talk about some of those things specifically as I go through here. But Career Connections is our online job board. We have career fairs. I just had one today. It's been a very busy day for me today. And those are industry-specific as well as wide-reaching. We also have other services, including resume writing, cover letters, mock interviews. I have a lot of students filtering through my office on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, so. And then I'll, I'll provide you a little bit of an overview of the Build Dakota and what we've been working on this year and where we're headed with that. So Career Connections is that online job board. It's a free service that we provide to all of our industry partners, giving them an opportunity to post their jobs, get involved by looking at student resumes, making some connections and networking with our students. Right now, we have thirty-one hundred-plus employers on our Career Connections website job board. Those are not obviously just from Sioux Falls area. They're regional. Some of them are nationwide, and some of them are global. We have a connection through handshake and through Get Grads that allows us to have some of those employers from around the, the country put their jobs on our job board without actually having a connection to us, but they are connecting to our students through that network. We have thirty-two hundred-plus contacts in that database, so those are thirty-two hundred individual people that I'm able to reach with the click of a button, and then tell them about the great news about our employer survey and the great news about our students being placed and those things. Right now, we have nine hundred and thirty-seven job openings listed on our job site. That number continues to increase. When I first came on about a year and a half ago, there were about seven hundred and fifty jobs on the job board. They just keep going up, and people keep calling and saying, we need grads, we need grads, we need grads, which is great news. I wish I had more grads to give them, and that's what we keep working for. Twenty-three hundred-plus students and alumni have profiles on there. When a student or alumnus creates a profile on Career Connections, they can upload their resume. It puts them in direct line of sight of all of the employers that are out there looking for them. And they do often ask, can you send me resumes? Hey, go on to Career Connections and look at the resumes for yourself. I'd be happy to send them to you, but this way they can directly look at them. Career fairs, I just had one today. We had our engineering career fair for civil land survey, architectural and construction. It was very successful. We had about three more employers there this year than we did last year. It's a smaller group. And so bringing in those new employers and employers that I've never seen before, who'd never done a career fair, Silkup Construction came this, today, was their very first career fair anywhere, ever. Silkup Construction came this, today, was their very first career fair anywhere, ever. Like they'd never done a career fair. The poor man had no idea what he was doing. I was trying to help him along. But we brought in all of those employers, they come and talk to the students, the students get to filter through. It's amazing to see the conversations that are happening. So we have 10 of those throughout this full year, brings over 200 employers to the campus. They come on campus, they talk to the kids, sometimes they do presentations, sometimes it's simply just setting up a booth so kids can come and talk to them. Shouldn't say kids, students. Students can come and talk to them. Every program is involved. I have a couple that I need to get in, involved in a deeper way since they are coming to campus next fall, so Vet Tech and Medical Assisting as well as Dental Assisting, we're going to get them involved in those career fairs as well. And like I said, very successful, but it's very busy for getting ready for all of those employers to come onto the campus. Other services that we provide, that I provide and our student success advisors help with, resume writing. In preparation for the career fair today, I reviewed 17 resumes yesterday, and then five more people sent me their resume this morning, and we're like, oh, can you get it to me before the career fair? Sure, I can do that. And so that word is getting out that that's a service that we provide, and more and more students are taking advantage of that, which I am appreciative of. There's a lot of different ideas about what a resume should look like, and I'm trying to help these students make their resume look the most professional and the most acceptable for today's hiring crowd. So we're working on that. Cover letters, they don't understand the importance of a cover letter, and so I'm, I'm working towards helping them understand why that's important and why it sets them apart, helping them learn how to write that and contribute to their own professional development in that way. Mock interviews, we do mock interviews. Some of our programs at Southeast Tech require a mock interview. More and more students are coming in and doing mock interviews because more and more students have never had jobs before. It's alarming to me to see how many students come to us and have never had even a part-time job and have absolutely no idea how to conduct themselves in an interview. So we're working on that as well. I did hold several lunch and learn events last fall, and will hold some more this spring, where students can come in for a workshop for these three different areas. They don't want to come to me individually, for whatever reason, they can come to a lunch and learn and get those, those helpful points and ask those questions that they have directly to me. And then Build Dakota. Build Dakota pretty much encompasses my spring semester for the months of January, February, and into March. This program has been phenomenal. Last year, we had 98 students sponsored with 30 other students who had, I'm sorry, with 30 sponsors. We also had a number of students that were given full rides without a sponsor. They still have the responsibility to work in South Dakota for three years, however, they didn't have a direct sponsor contributing to their scholarship. This year, however, we have increased the number of sponsors. Right now, I have, that number is off. We have 42, 43, sorry, 43 confirmed potential sponsors for 2020, 2021. And the potential with those 43 sponsors is 130-plus sponsored students for scholarships. That's phenomenal. The retention rate is increasing and getting better, and we have more and more students who are coming to tech school and coming to Southeast Tech because of this program, giving them an opportunity to be able to afford it. And, and so it's just been a phenomenal opportunity for us, a phenomenal opportunity for them, and something I'm really excited to be a part of. It's kind of a down and dirty, nitty-gritty of career services. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
How many other staff work with you to like do any of the services that you provide?
Me, myself, and I.
That's what I thought it sounded like, and that's why I was just making sure, because in the 10 by 8 office, I was like, because we're doing all the resumes and everything, so.
So we have six student success advisors at Southeast Tech, and all of us are, are willing and able to review resumes and look at cover letters and do mock interviews. A lot of times, they filter those to me simply because of my background and my experience and my expertise in that area, but any one of them is capable of, of doing those. Yeah.
Good job. Thank you for all the work. The Build Dakota Scholarship is so important with raising tuition costs, we see, and also what it's all, so helpful to these students.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Do you have a motion to approve the career services?
It's a move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pressing sign, motion carries. Thank you, Paula. Last report. What update?
Good afternoon, President Mickelson, board members. First, I want to say thank you again to all the presenters here. Paula does a, a great job. It's a critically important support service that she is providing to our students, and we have some outstanding employment numbers as a result of not only the quality of the programs, but the connections that we make with our employers, and I think Paula has worked hard to increase that, along with the rest of our campus, I think, in, in that outreach. Also, nice to hear the news from Tracy in, in terms of his employer survey results and that, a trend that's heading in the right direction, you know, keep that moving forward. And, and last but not least, certainly, Megan's numbers on enrollment are incredibly important for us as we kind of chart the future in, in terms of potential new programming and, and all of the connections that have been built with industry and the outcomes of that also helping to support our enrollment growth. So thank you to, I say this a lot on campus, to our admissions staff and student success and all of the faculty that spend a, a great deal of time outside of normal duties with AARs, with recruiting events, all of those things contribute. There was another group, though, I wanted to just mention, on campus that does an outstanding job, gets little attention, but they're just as important in terms of a contributor, and that's our custodians on campus. I was thinking back, in the summer, they do an outstanding job keeping the campus looking clean, and I often get comments on how nice the buildings are maintained, and, and we are fortunate from the state, from all of the support that we get from our industry partners, but custodians are there day and night, you know, making certain that our students have a, a positive environment and our staff have a positive environment to work in. So definitely want to thank them, too, for all the good work there. My update is on the legislative update, so there are a couple of bills that we are following closely this legislative session. The first is House Bill 1083. That is the, the big policy proposal that the tech, tech board has made to the state legislature, and that's the name change bill. So last week, the bill passed unanimously through the House Education Committee, which was, which was very nice to see. Yesterday, it went to the House floor, there was discussion, and it passed, but it passed on a 45 to 25 vote. So there was, there were more concerns, I guess, in terms of listening to the discussion and the vote. The conversations were still very positive about technical education in the state of South Dakota. More of the no votes, I would say, were centered on the old adage, if it, if it ain't broke, you know, you don't need to fix it, kind of thing. So I think there was questions about whether or not a name change was really needed, if our enrollment is doing as well as it is, and, you know, we're, we're ranked nationally as the top two-year system in the country, individually campuses receive awards, you know, Southeast Tech among them. So I, I think, well, that's a, that's a, perhaps a, a question that can be raised. It's also easily answered when you think about, we are one of two states in the country that call our colleges an institute, and I still think that causes some confusion to many parents and others, and though, although our enrollment's doing, doing well, as you saw, we still can do better. And I think with the name change, we are, in fact, an accredited college. We accept credits into Southeast Tech, our credits transfer out of Southeast Tech, and we are everywhere considered to be a college, but our name does not reflect that. So I think it's an important piece of legislation, and I hope that it's going next to the Senate floor, and we're, we're hoping that we get strong support. And, and the House Education Committee, we did receive strong industry support, so we'll see how that moves forward. There's also some dual credit legislation that was just introduced at the end of last week, and this, this is impactful, not only to Southeast Tech, but I think the Sioux Falls School District, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. SB 142 would limit the program, the dual credit program, to only general education courses. SB 143 would require students who fail or drop courses to reimburse the state, and SB 144 would prevent students who fail or drop courses from taking future courses. And a, a number of concerns have been raised, first and foremost, by limiting it, dual credit program to only general education courses. We feel that we are restricting access to CTE courses, the CNA courses that we are providing, that provide a, a basic foundation for many of our students going on into nursing and other healthcare professions, or the construction certificates that were recently added with the help of AGC and Sioux Falls Home Builders. Those would no longer be eligible for funding. So there are a number of, of courses, I think, that we are already offering, and, and courses that we hope to expand and, and offer more of in, in the trades programming area, in addition to general education courses, that we feel by limiting, that legislation limiting it to only dual credit programs is really a restricting access to dual credit. And it's impactful, and if you remember back to some of the conversations, I think, when we had earlier, I don't remember if it was October, the board report, or the November board report, where we were talking about the state, the, the study that the state conducted on dual credit, and a number of students that would be impacted by the change in legislation would be, those individuals least likely to be able to afford dual credit. And if that program is taken away, again, I think it's restricting access to individuals from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, and a segment of the population with lower tendencies are ready to not be taking those courses. So we hope that with industry support, we can muster some strong voices in opposition to the proposed legislation, and there is, at least as of today, we did not have any hearing dates yet for that legislation, so we'll follow that closely. The last piece of legislation was something that came up last year. It's reemerged this year, and it's House Bill 1069. It would authorize veterans to attend courses offered at technical institute without tuition payments, and I think the Technical Ed Board is looking at that as, essentially in all of the campuses, as somewhat of an unfunded mandate. So while we would love to support that, we'd also like to see the state include some tuition dollars. As lean as we're operating, that would help immensely, you know, with that type of legislation, so we're hoping that potentially might be there in the future as well. The last point, I guess I was going to mention, we were also, the state Technical Institute presidents, we were all present with the Joint Committee on Appropriations and our annual budget proposal to the state, and had a very good conversation. Nick Wendell, our executive director, did a very nice job, you know, outlining what our ask is essentially in terms of a 2% increase in the per-student allocation, an increase in the, the tuition buy-down to try to keep tuition lower. Unfortunately, as talked before, I think Governor's tentative FY '21 budget does not include funding for those initiatives, so that's not looking very promising. While the, while the committee members were supportive, I, I think the, the one hope we have, probably, fingers crossed here, but they asked a lot of questions about equipment and the equipment needs, and we have a, a $3 million equipment ask between the four technical institutes, and certainly Southeast Tech is a, is a big part of that, because Vet Tech is an expensive program to bring forward, Dental Assisting, another expensive program to bring forward, and, and so any assistance we can get from the state in, in those programs would be greatly appreciated. We're hoping that there might be some one-time money at the end of the session that we're lobbying for. So all in all, you know, pretty positive, though, report from the state legislature, as I think they very much appreciate the good work that's being done in all of the technical institutes, and, and meeting frankly might, might be the number one challenge in the state, and that is the skilled workforce shortage that we face across the state. So with that report, I guess I will wrap it up, and any questions or try to answer any questions or comments.
Any questions? I think that's it. Thank you. It sounds like they're leaving you pretty much alone, so that's good, except for the 142, maybe.
Right, yeah, well, we'll see, we'll, we'll watch it.
It was only one sponsor, it looked like, is that correct?
At this point, yeah, there's only one legislator that has signed on, but we're hoping, we had a phone conference this morning, and what I have heard, at least what was discussed, was that both the State Technical Board and the Board of Regents would be in opposition to the proposed legislation. So, thank you.
Thank you. No action needed, so any more information, anything about the board? Seeing then, do you have a motion for adjournment? So moved, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned, thank you.